My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to dress up before we start the meeting in that. We get a legal opinion from our attorney that this is a valid meeting due to some Chinese law. Because it was never, this meeting was never advertised in the paper. To be at this certain place was advertised originally over at, over on the Struck Street Road over near the side of Thomas.
Okay, legal sin is, it would be a legal meeting. I think what probably shouldn't happen is council should have made an official notice to change the meeting, but I think it was posted and the agenda was posted. And appearance of the meeting allows it to happen. So I would say that's something we've got to look at going forward, but I'd say tonight is a legal meeting.
Even though this meeting wasn't posted in the prior.
Actual written thing that says that, just your opinion.
My opinion.
Right, so no backing or legalized document of your opinion is correct?
And I don't think there's, this has anything to do with the borough should have. The borough is required to notify the public of any change in meeting dates, time, or location. It's not a should have, they have to. We had the date set for the entire year at our temporary borough building, which we had leased for the entire year. Those dates were all advertised. These four gentlemen chose to change it.
Because of Penn.
We had the location and there was no need for the change.
It was changed, I think, since we changed it, the meetings happened here.
How many? One and then a special, right? Oh, no, wait, you didn't have one.
The November meeting was canceled.
Right.
My opinion is I don't want to go down and draw on these guys where they didn't know everything.
So they have it.
Mr. Doughton, I did not agree to this change. And were all the agendas and the change posted 24 hours in advance at this location and at the old location? Because people would not know to come here and look for the change. It should have been posted at the old location.
I don't know where it was posted.
Well, maybe our acting borough secretary could have.
It was just posted at this location.
Then how do people know to come here?
Okay, let's get down to the meeting.
No matter how illegal it is, you're just going to keep right on pushing.
Just let it go. I saw Jack down as a compliment.
It was his personal opinion.
I have questioned that this is a.
I have a couple of things that I need to address before we start this meeting as well. Our acting borough secretary had agreed to give me paper copies of agendas prior to the meeting and that was not done prior to this meeting in the 24-hour window as required. And that is on video, we need to refer to that.
Did you, did you receive a copy of the email?
I received an email, I can't open your documents.
Okay, did you ever notify me to just say, hey, I could not, I could not open this document?
I told you and you agreed.
And I told you, you agreed, that's the meeting, read the minutes.
You agreed.
Yes, I did, but then when I notice she's able to use her email to contact people, I'm not going to give people special exceptions.
But you agreed to it.
Okay, let's go down.
The other thing I would like to bring up is that our mayor is currently on crutches and Mr. Doughton and I were trying to find lights to turn on so he could use the handicap entrance. And Mr. Roan replied that we have no need to go into the church. We don't have to stay there. And that should, those lights should be on and ready to go.
Kirk, I did say that to you and said, you're not going in this, you told me you're not going in.
That's what he said, you're not going in.
Anybody has a right to go in.
Yes, you did, you afford that.
Those lights need to be on and ready to go for any person who shows up. I still speak.
I understand you're speaking for your. Because if not on the agenda, is that on the agenda?
Who will show up at this meeting, they will be in a walkout. Are they supposed to stand outside screaming? Thank you, Mr. Kirkron does not want the handicap to pass.
Is there a copy of the minutes for the public?
I haven't got a copy of the minutes.
Yeah, a copy of the minutes were forwarded to you via your email.
Can we, can we?
No, I did not give it.
I got an agenda.
Did you get a copy of the minutes? And I CC'd him with them.
And I have no minutes either.
Maybe that was back in, prior to November's meeting.
It didn't have a November meeting.
Correct, prior to the scheduled November's meeting, they were sent out. Nothing has changed since.
So you don't have any minutes for the public?
Yeah, we'd like to do them.
Since they've been around since what, October, you're saying we should have kept them long range?
There's a copy.
Could you read them, Mr. Secretary?
Well, we have to pass them around to the legal persons.
Everybody should have reviewed them, you should be ready to hold on them now.
But the public has a right to hear the minutes.
They have been read.
They don't get disseminated to the public, it's the borough council that approves the minutes.
However, Mr. Bujay, this is a public meeting to inform the public on the actions of the council, correct?
It is.
And so they should, we should be able to get a copy of the meeting minutes.
And we'll welcome to look at them, but they can proceed with business. And in municipalities that I've represented in the past, they have never been disseminated to the public at meetings. They are corrupted, you have a right to look at them, of course. You should move on with your business.
Okay, is there any additions or corrections to the Act October 32 minutes? If not, there.
I'll make a motion, will you accept the minutes for October the 3rd?
House Second Act of 2022. All in favor? Darrell Haines, yes. Darrell Haines, yes.
Keith, yes.
Kirk, yes.
The Act.
Kristen, no.
Okay, for the November 2nd special meeting, is there any additions or corrections to them? If not, they stand approved as they are. So you're in motion to accept them?
I believe you had a public member that had a comment.
Minutes. They're going to go.
The public is allowed to comment before we take any official action.
I have a motion to. Second.
The same time the October 3 minutes got to you.
You have the public email that was sent.
So when, when was the public's lawsuit hearing?
October 3rd.
The October 3rd and November 2nd.
It was on the November 7th, correct?
What's that? Now you're on to the special meeting November 2nd.
Correct.
Right, well, how could they, those minutes come out when they came out with this one?
Was it on the 2nd?
Isn't that what you just said?
Maybe the 7th. I'm not sure what you're saying.
He just filed the 7 minutes in October.
That the October 3 minutes come out. That was your statement just a second ago. Which is impossible.
I sent out the October minutes and the November minutes. And I'll have to verify with the attorney Bujay because I CC'd him on everything.
Why would you not have voted on the October minutes?
Minutes were sent out November 4.
Okay.
Then how were the November ones part of that same email? Hmm, curious.
Okay, you're in motion in the second, in November 2nd meeting.
Right, do you have a question? So my, my question, I have a question before we vote. So my first question is why weren't the October minutes voted on at the November meeting if you had a meeting?
It was a special meeting.
And as far as your special meeting goes, it was very confusing because I have this notice which was taped to my door. So at some point, Mr. Payne did know that I wanted hard copies of everything.
So is that something that just, you just determine what you want to do meet? Accept minutes at special meetings or? Because if you remember, you accepted meeting minutes, the December 2 meeting minutes happened in December 29th, 2021 meeting.
I don't think it was on in November 2nd agenda.
Or December.
We're talking November.
Well, that's what I'm saying, when you said that you couldn't accept the minutes.
No, I didn't say we couldn't, I said it wasn't on the agenda to accept them. There's a motion.
So it all depends on how you.
My question, I.
When on the agenda, the agenda was recommended.
I still haven't asked my question.
Darrell Haines, yes.
I'm still trying to ask my question. I'm still trying to ask my question.
Oh, go ahead.
I've been trying, you continue to talk over me. So this notice was extremely confusing because it says, first of all, special meeting November 2 at 7:00 p.m. Then right on the same paper, it says special meeting November 1 at 7:00 p.m. And in the paper, there were three different pieces of information. So how is anyone supposed to know what really was going on and when this meeting was actually taking place?
Who actually puts the, who put them in the paper? Who puts the special meetings in the paper?
Sometimes our office does, sometimes the boroughs.
Who put your, who put the ones for the November special meeting in the paper?
I think it, at least one or more than one, our office did.
So you're telling me that these guys are paying you to do their job?
That's exactly it.
While he takes a paycheck?
Yep.
I'm not taking the paycheck.
No, you're paying them to do your job.
Yes, it's acting assistant.
He's very present, he should.
Acting assistant secretary.
You are the secretary. There is no secretary.
I'm checking November 2 minutes.
No.
Okay, Jake?
No.
Okay.
You won't get a secretary so they can't find out what you're doing. It's like you won't get another council member.
I do want it on record that I did not receive any minutes.
Any, any of the minutes, you received no minutes.
Right, put it in the minutes.
I still have the emails where I got the emails from you on some other things. There are nothing attached to them. They're right, you'd like to see them, I can pull it up.
Treasury report.
There's copies for the public if anybody wants to indulge. Treasurer's report as of December.
Is there a lot of copies of those, I guess?
December 2022, general account. Balance as of 10-3-2022 was $32,933.27. October withdrawals totaled $21,593.97. Total deposits, $3,635.47. Current balance as of 12-5-2022, $14,974.77. Liquid fuels account, the balance as of 10-3-2022 was $13,287.93. Total withdraws, $3,687.82. Balance as of 12-5-2022, $9,611. UCC account, balance as of 10-3-2022 was $1,976.80. No withdrawals, no deposits, balance as of 12-5 is $1,976.80. Fire fund, balance as of 10-3 was $4,420.70. Withdraws, none, deposits, $259. Balance as of 12-5-2022, $4,679.70.
Do I hear a motion to accept the treasury report?
I'll make a motion, accept this treasury report, it's red.
I'll second it.
The, going over this a little bit here, we've got, the Baptist Church, $7,000. We've got the assistant solicitor closing cost of $1,953.
Want to pay close?
So, I guess that's still going on, this is a secret backdoor deal?
Probably.
Some of us council members aren't aware of what's going on. I haven't seen a, I requested last month to see the contract. Well, not last month, two months ago, because we didn't have a meeting last month, which was another violation of the code. We did not have a regular meeting and pay all the bills. There's only four special things. So, I guess we want to explain it. How we're moving forward with this church and how the backdoor deal is.
I'm not aware of any backdoor deals, but there was a motion made to pay the church $7,000. And within the contract, it stated that church, excuse me, the borough would purchase and close on the church.
What was the date on the closing?
I do not have that. Defense, who would be the attorney to handle it?
I think it was December of 2023.
Right, so why are you paying them now if it's not closing? Why are you paying them if something is not, you know?
We closed down the church.
Relax, Pat, we're going to discuss this.
Your understanding, yes.
Here we go. So where's all the finalized paperwork then?
It's still in the attorney's hands.
There was no motion.
So I see, she's not done with it.
She's delayed that when she's done with it, but it takes time to get a copy of the paperwork to the borough.
What motion in October was to pay $7,000?
I thought there was a court case coming up. That was to.
That's on the agenda, who we get to eject?
No, it's discussed right now, because we got funds that were paid. And I'd like to know these funds before I can vote on them. So I thought there was a petition in court not to close on the church. Is that what's going on?
There was a petition, but there was no order preventing. There's a hearing scheduled for Thursday.
What's that hearing on?
Hearing is whether or not the court should prevent the deal going through.
So they're like, pay the. How is it going on if this guy is tied into court?
There's no order saying they couldn't close.
This is your back.
It was handled by the assistant solicitor.
So what, what would happen if that judge went back and said that they didn't want us to close? Wait, a financial burden on us?
I don't know what he could say because from what they're telling me now, if the deal closed.
When did you vote to?
Were you aware that the closing is deal?
Well, I understood that they were in the process of closing the deal.
I wasn't part of the deal because I told you, I'm representing the borough in the lawsuit, which concerns itself with.
When you wrote the contract.
But you did help construct the, the contract.
Initially, I worked on the contract to start the process, that's true.
So did you think that it was a good contract for Strucka Borough or was it sort of a lopsided contract?
I don't know why you say it's a lopsided contract. It's not my opinion, it's not up to me to make an opinion on whether it's a lopsided deal or a good deal or not. My job is to represent the boroughs to rock it based on the majority numbers of council vote.
But not the people of the borough? People! What about the people of the borough? Don't you represent the people of the borough?
The taxpayers.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Bujay. How can you sit there to represent the borough in a hole? And let that $1,953.25 slide when there was no motion, there was no discussion? It's paid out. Or was that a closed meeting?
No, there was a special meeting on November 2nd.
Correct, there was nothing on that.
No motion made to pay that.
Nothing. You're all filmed. Where was that, maybe the payment?
We closed the deal, they closed the deal from what I understand.
It was never voted on, there was no motion.
Well, you bring it up Thursday.
Because they closed down the deal.
Why is it my responsibility? You're representing the borough.
I'm representing the council in the lawsuit.
If, if it's a wrongdoing, why aren't you protecting the rest of us?
I don't think it is a wrongdoing, Mrs. Bujay.
How can it not be? There was no motion.
The motion was to close the deal.
Where, where did the minutes say that?
There was nothing down that $1,953.
Jason, I've already given my opinion.
I feel, I feel your opinion is wrong.
Okay, you can have your, you have your.
So now my next question is, let's go back to this outside council. So I can get outside representation.
Under the code, you have a right to do that under certain circumstances.
Okay, and I will do so.
You can do that.
Okay.
So what would be his procedure going forward?
Oh, I think I gave you the statute, Jason.
No, he just gave me a quote from the code book.
Yeah, which was the statute.
It just says that I'm eligible, yes.
That's right, that's what it holds.
Right.
There we go.
So are we declaring that there's a conflict of interest between council and Mr. Haines of America?
No, I'm not declaring that at all. He's the one that says he may in the council, he didn't say what it was about. If he wants to pursue getting the council, he can certainly do that. Pursue into the borough council. And I gave you the section to it, okay?
Where's the invoice from the assistant solicitor?
From who?
The assistant solicitor. The money we are questioning.
That you never filled out.
Where's the invoice?
I don't have a copy of the invoice.
We're paying.
It was part of the motion, it was part of the motion that it would be paid at the end of closing.
Upon invoice.
Well, Charlie is the treasurer.
Take it up with him.
Who's Charlie?
Uh, Charlie Kirk. The National Bank.
Yes, they're going on you the direction of council, they do not.
You should still have copies of all those invoices.
But now, all right, we've not even said, who instructed them to pay that at the National Bank?
Where's someone who figured that out?
You admitted, darling, you know you did.
Somebody had to make a phone call or stop at the bank, so who are they?
And there is.
Right, your mom. I know, it's very.
Mr. Bujay.
So do we have copies of any of these invoices of bills to be paid?
Yes.
Can you tell me which ones we have?
I have Donald Potter's, I have Bujay Fisher's, I have Hennelec, I have Tri-County, I have H.A. Thompson, I have Strucka, oh, in terms of last month's bills, I do have them. I don't have them on me, but I do have all the invoices aside from.
All of your questions.
Well, that involved the last meeting's bills.
Motion's been made.
So we're still discussing it yesterday. So you get some invoices but not other invoices from the bank, is what you're saying?
Well, my. I think it's definitely.
I hear crickets.
In terms of.
Pick or have.
This particular invoice, perhaps. If you question, yeah, I have it, I have it. If I don't, I don't, I don't know what else you're looking for.
All right, Mr. Bujay.
I know, we, we had arguments about paying one particular law firm bill without an invoice and nobody had a problem with that. So, you know, you can't, you can't be eating it too. Okay, so.
So you can drag that here.
Another thing.
You had an invoice.
They didn't say a bill was paid.
You have the treasurer's report to see what was taken out of the account.
I would, I want to know the procedure of what's going on now that since we don't actually have the bills in our own hands and it's some random person down in Holsdale. So the bills still come to Strucka?
Bills come to Strucka.
So you asked, you asked.
Motions are made.
I wasn't done talking.
Well, you've asked a question, so I'm going to answer it before I forget it with the multitude of other questions you have. What happens is, is the invoices come in. I create a treasurer's report, bills to be paid, we vote on it. After which I make copies of all the invoices and send them to the bank. Okay? Now with, you have the opportunity to ask if I have the invoices. You did it last month or the last time we had a meeting, I provided you with what I had. The same thing could be said now. Motions were made.
Right, but you don't. For have these copies, is what you're telling me?
Copies of what now?
That invoice.
That invoice.
The solicitor invoice. Correct. I was, I, I do not have that particular invoice in my possession. But somebody must have had this payment gone out from our treasurer.
That's the question.
Then who's somebody?
You answer your question. Who's the idiot?
Do we know what date it was paid?
So did that assistant solicitor send a direct bill?
Again, I personally did not receive any copies.
Did you get a copy with Darrell?
No, I talked to her and she said that she would send a, a copy of the, of the paperwork to the borough.
But also she didn't worry.
Hey, if she sent a bill, she would not be paying bills. Did you see a copy of the bill, Darrell?
I didn't see a copy of it.
Have you been in communication with assistant solicitor on this?
Not real recently.
I have some questions on fight, fight this excavating, I tell her. I wrote that I did call you, Mr. Haines, and asked you to have put on your agenda.
Correct.
Correct.
I think you did.
Right, it's not that.
Correct.
Correct. My question is, why didn't it go on?
Because I asked for it?
No, yes.
No. Because I did not make contact with Keith before the agenda was done.
When did you call, Mr. Haines?
Friday.
Friday.
Friday morning.
When was the agenda done?
Yeah, I can tell you the exact minute.
But I did not have contact with Keith before he put the agenda out in the time.
That seems to have repetition here. Because I hear that from the other staff. But I, I still will bring up the questions that I have. Can I get a copy of GP 11 permit?
The what permit?
The GP 11.
GP 11. Now, what is the GP 11 permit?
That is to work in the water. That should have been applied for, which it was not.
Slide it through.
No, so more really like. Oh, wait, your solicitor of that was.
Okay, he just mentioned on the board to pay the bills.
No, what, you didn't answer my question.
What was that?
I'm just freezing.
A copy of the GP 11 permission.
But he also said there wasn't one, so he answered his own question.
I, I'm not a government body.
I have no idea.
There's a motion on the board to pay, to pay the bills.
Wait, no, 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 back up, we're still discussing this.
Now, that was for the treasurer's report.
I want a copy of the GP 11.
I'm not aware of there is one.
Well, why wasn't there, there should have been.
Okay, that's your opinion, I'm not.
No, that's my opinion, that's a fact.
Okay, what was the work on the, the Kellaw Road? Myself and Jason was up there back, I'll ask, a few weeks ago and looking to see what boroughs spent $13,000 to redo some solutions on the Kellaw Road. You come along and I asked if you would show us. And you air the lead, just took off, you wouldn't show us. So why wouldn't you show us what we were really getting done there? What's the secret why you can't let us on?
There is, there is no secret.
Well, why couldn't you have explained what was going on up there?
I, I said you that I give Mr. Pike.
No, it's not Mr. Pike's, this is council.
Okay, well, it was an agreement, a motion and an agreement to enter into.
That's why I asked you, what were we doing up there? Because you were putting in 40 foot of 24-inch pipe. Were they new pipes you put in? Because you claim you were adding on the pipes, but what do you do with 40 foot of 24-inch pipes when?
They added on to the existing pipes.
Did you put any new pipes in all the way?
He added on to the existing pipes.
So why would you put 24-inch pipes on like 18-inch pipes?
I'm not aware he did, but you'd have to take that up for bill.
No, you don't have to take it up.
Okay.
You're the one that's going around with.
And you're the road familiar, remember?
Yeah, you're the road man.
That's what your lawyer told you.
But again, I'm not aware, it was 24-inch pipes added on to 18s.
Well, he knows exactly what's going on.
I know he does.
So on his work sheet, it was 40 foot, was it? 40 foot of 24-inch pipe. Okay, so where did that go?
He had added on to the existing pipes that were there.
He added on 40 foot?
There was, there's 4, there's 4 2-foot pipes.
I guess the question is, did they?
He had 4-inch pipes.
There was only 2.
What can I tell you again?
Oh, no, darling, of course, we have video.
Look at what you do in your pockets.
I honestly remember how you looked at it, it was water, it was dirty.
Correct. But what you should do is finish your treasurer's report. You can leave other business, wait till you leave other businesses and you got that.
That's part of the treasurer's report.
It's not. No.
No, not part of the treasurer's.
Is it part of the bill to pay? Why don't they explain?
Ninety-nine hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Actually, really want to-
For Kellah Road.
Ron, you're really going to back it, because here's the bills to be paid, here's the treasurer's report, the treasurer's report already has the bills that were going to be paid. So, they should be doing bills to be paid first, and then the treasurer's report. Because treasurer's reports, you're gonna, anybody's gonna vote on, it's gonna okay it, that the bills that were paid, and the seven thousand dollars at the church.
That's because they've already took part in this agreement. Those are all agreed with.
How can I consciously vote on something if I don't have something on this bill?
Just because they already know what they're voting on before you, that's why they can read the treasurer's report.
Okay, you're hearing a motion to accept the treasurer's report, yeah, we got one, Don and Kurt seconded it.
Wayne Bank on the treasurer's report, seven fifty, and that's what it cost us a month for them to handle this, so?
We're getting seven fifty, Wayne Bank.
Down with you, yes.
That's the interest, that means the, it's the mom.
Okay, what about your all the money out of the loan payment? There's no money left in Wayne Bank when you get it out.
Nobody still had Wayne Bank.
Right.
Well, the loan is, but how, how do you get money in Wayne Bank?
We don't, wholesale cut a check to Wayne Bank, we didn't-
So, when was that voted on, that wholesale has the right to be cut checks to Wayne Bank?
Like we've been at a loan agreement, it was to be paid automatically, we go back and you look at your loan agreement.
Remember, we didn't have a copy of the loan agreement, that would just submake surprise in front of, we never got the copy of it.
I was shocked.
One more time.
You and Kirk.
We weren't on the board. Don.
Donald Haynes, you do.
Down with you, yes.
Donald Haynes, yes.
Keith, yes.
Yes.
Okay, no.
Kristen, now?
Who made that? Certainly, you got it.
All right, bills to be paid. One, Donald Potter, November twenty-twenty-two, Borough Fire Tax, twenty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Boujé Fisher invoice nineteen zero zero five, two thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars. That's for litigation from April through November. Boujé Fisher invoice nineteen zero zero seven, Borough Business, October third through November second, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Boujé Fisher invoice nineteen zero five four, Borough Business, November fourth through December first, five hundred and ten dollars. Boujé Fisher invoice nineteen zero five five, litigation, October twentieth through November twenty-third, one thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Pennelec, eighty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Tri County Independent, eleven-one special meeting, eighty-five dollars and ninety cents. Tri County Independent, add, for eleven-one twenty-two special meeting, ninety-three fifty. Tri County Independent, add, for eleven-two special meeting, ninety-three fifty. H.A. Thompson, Treasurer's Bond, one oh three. Strucka Borough Council, twenty-twenty-two salary, one hundred and twenty dollars per seven council persons, eight hundred and forty dollars. Strucka Borough Mayor, twenty-twenty-two salary, one hundred and fifty dollars. Thompson Hose Company Fire Tax, four thousand six hundred twenty dollars and seventy cents. Thompson Township, invoice for the twenty-one slash twenty-two winter maintenance, six hundred dollars.
Okay, I think a motion to pay the council, some of your debt is on the, to his account, his payment account.
So, this is the invoice for last winter?
Yes.
Then we just got it now?
Yes. You have a court. I made a motion to pay the Townsend Township, six hundred dollars on it.
Did you see that invoice?
I second it. Here's an invoice and a letter dated eleven seventh.
And this was the first time we received an invoice from them?
No. Why would it state it eleven seventh?
That was hand carried and given to Kirk Rowe and Chad Wong.
No, this is, this is the Thompson Township, no?
I know, he brought both, and the fire tax.
Yeah, because this is, it was due for a contract on May fifth, twenty-twenty-two.
Who signed it, contract?
You signed it?
Um, Kirk did it. That's President of the Borough Council last week, and our Wayward Forward Secretary, Denny.
Make a motion, Thompson Township?
Yes, I made a motion, and, and we seconded it.
Okay, so that's like a void term contract?
Yes, the Town Township.
Liquid fuels.
Correct.
Speak up.
When? When did, uh, Denny resign?
October.
Okay, Don.
Okay, who, Donald Haynes Junior, who, who made the motion?
Yes, I did.
Darrell made the motion, and Don seconded it, okay.
Donald Haynes Junior, uh, he asked.
Darrell Haynes, yes.
Keith Payne, yes.
Yes.
Eric Haste Haynes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to pay the Townsend Hose Company the fire tax.
What's that?
I'll second that.
We have a bill from them?
I got a question on the, on the twelve, Mary Fag. That's not correct, is it?
What should it be?
One forty-four?
It's in one forty-four, okay.
Long as we're on the Mary Fag, I have brought this up for the last two years. Here's my two checks for the last two years for a hundred and forty-four dollars, I brought this up at a meeting with you, because I have the cash ease, because I feel the accounts that we've been running since two thousand twenty and twenty-one, these checks were for, that they had changed the tax, uh, changed the tax rate, and they never did it by ordinance. They changed the rate.
They changed the millage?
Yes, the millage from the fire account, they doubled it, and the millage from the, uh, real estate, you know, for the Borough General Fund, they had lowered that. They didn't, not, not the time they did a resolution, you know darn well, they probably just went back and said they did it by resolution. But by Borough Code, it has to be, if you're gonna play around and change any tax ordinance, or any tax revenue, you have to do it by ordinance. And when I was the mayor, I brought that up to them, and Darrell's probably going back on the tape, he would have said, "Take it to the Solicitor or take it to the State Agency." Well, I questioned, questioned it, I'm hung out, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars, because I think we should have a legal opinion on that. And if so, I should get reimbursed my back two years, if it was legal what they did, they never would talk about it, they would never do anything. And all they did was, twenty, two thousand twenty, when they changed that, they just advertised and sent it to people, it was gonna change X amount of dollars, and then it was gonna change X amount of dollars on the fire tax and the general fund.
I don't want budget.
No. I don't believe it was in the budget, because, uh, I don't know if it was in the budget or not, but-
If you want a legal opinion, I just need some more facts, and if you guys want me to give you a legal opinion on it, I will, but if you have not been paid, we should be reimbursed for that.
Well, I brought it back to council several times, we should be reimbursed. And, uh, but I wanna know, by going forward, if this was legal what they did, and if not, what do we do, go back to change it all?
On that millage?
On millage.
Jack, you give me something here that may be significant, but I don't know nothing about.
Yes, I will.
You give me some information for giving it to me.
Okay, no, I heard Thompson Hose Company.
Yeah, and, uh, within that, more from the pay Thompson Hose Company, forty-six hundred and twenty dollars and seventy cents to be the dollar amount paid.
And I asked to see an invoice.
There's no invoice, there is what's in it, according to the treasurer's report.
Contract, something?
There was a twenty-twenty-two contract, I do not have the twenty-twenty-two fire contract. But we will be discussing the twenty-three contract.
It would be paid in January and July, twice a year, they requested it, and there was never anything paid in July this year, and, uh, Chad did call me and ask me if we could, uh, pay them, so they could have their money. And I believe it is, it isn't in the contract.
Did you pay them in January?
No, they haven't paid them at all.
All right, no, I'm aware of that.
No, there was no check cut in July this year, as they requested.
We have brought this up before.
It ain't time, but they don't hear it, because it doesn't benefit them.
I believe Mr. Woods has a question.
Yes, Donald Haynes Junior.
I got a question about-
What do you guys vote on?
Paid a, uh, fire tax to Thompson Hose Company.
But before official action can be taken, the public does have the right to ask questions. Do you want me to bring up the appropriate Borough Code?
Yeah, bring it up.
Okay, just bring it up.
Why, you won't bring up Borough Code every year, at least one is- The number it says that public has the right to comment on every little thing that the Borough acts on, bring it up.
Jack Haste Haynes, and I have in the contract, hello?
While she's looking that up, is it already, if I ask, I just wanted to be clarified on the, uh, payment for the council members, for their, that's for attendance at meetings?
It's a hundred and twenty dollars a year, per year.
Is it a hundred and twenty dollars a year, or ten dollars per meeting?
Hundred and twenty dollars a year.
Okay.
It's a flat rate. So, I'm reading it.
Right.
Do you guys get, is that, um, special?
Well, no, the way they originally reads, ten dollars per month. Now, per meeting, per month, but you must attend.
Did that change it?
Yeah, everything changes.
The Sunshine Act requires that the council is allowed for public comment prior to taking official action at a duly advertised public meeting, the right of citizens to make comments, is limited to matters concerned, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the government body.
They can have it in advance, or they can have it at the end of the year.
Prior to taking official action.
That's before.
That's before.
Before or vote?
We vote.
When you hear the rock?
Prior means before, it's, it's required in the Borough Council handbook, um, under every handbook of the Sunshine Act.
What does it say? I can't read it, what's the section?
You just read it, please.
Okay.
Take a picture and email it to them.
Yeah, okay.
Screenshot, there you go.
It's funny how many, many times I've thought this other person, that you can wanna question it, you know it's true, but I don't know why you bother anybody with it.
That's it.
More than equal benefits.
Um, so we're making touch, and we're ready to need to vote, and did you get your question answered?
Yep.
I vote yes.
Okay, I need, I need a motion to pay out the general fund. Donald Potter, twenty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Boujé Fisher, two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Boujé Fisher, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Boujé Fisher, five hundred and ten dollars. Boujé Fisher, fourteen hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty cents. Pennelec, eighty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Tri County Independent, eighty-five dollars and ninety cents. Tri County Independent, ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. Tri County Independent, ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. Uh, Treasurer's Bond, for a hundred and three dollars. Strucka Borough Council salaries, total of eight hundred and forty, and the mayor's salary, who said it, a hundred and forty-four, correct, Jason? Out of the general fund.
Uh, second motion.
I'd like to see invoices for Mr. Boujé.
So, Ron, you got here on the bill here for twenty-six twenty-five for litigation, and fourteen thirty-seven litigation. I thought that's our moral insurance, take a care of that.
For Borough, you want to pay your, your, your course.
Never done that before. No. We've, we've never ever done that before. So-
That's funny.
Was my understanding the Borough paying the first five thousand dollars?
First five thousand dollars of the bill.
Correct, and the Borough responsible for the first five thousand?
Okay, well, let's just, how come we didn't pay the first five thousand dollars on, on your lawsuit, when you sued the Borough?
I can't, I can, I can help you.
Okay, I, I can handle you. Ron, can we do it? I started it, so I'll answer, because that was a bogus lawsuit, and then it ended up at court, we would have passed one.
Let's stick to the bill that'll be paid right now.
No, 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 I have a question, why we're getting billed for this, why we're not turning it into our insurance company? Is our insurance covering us or not? Because I got the email back from you, you said that was still up in the air.
Insurance is providing effects, whether they're gonna pay out anything or not, because there isn't any kind of verdict and any kind of monetary basis, which we don't believe they have.
Monetary basis, huh?
Well, if you get sued, you get damages, or you get some kind of relief, this lawsuit is more about specific relief, not about much.
So, why wouldn't we be just handing this to them? Sure, I mean, any other lawsuit, it was always, that was handled into the insurance company, it's always been the insurance company. On the book, and then the insurance company will deduct the first five thousand dollars on-
So, where's five hundred is on Borough?
It is. But that's after the insurance, because what if the, what if the insurance, what if the insurance didn't pay for it all, and the judge come back drilling, saying that these four were, uh, accounted for?
The four were removed from the lawsuit, so the judge isn't gonna say it.
Well, for a violation of the Sunshine Act law, I thought-
They've been removed from the lawsuit twice.
The lawsuits, again, Strucka Borough and Strucka Borough only, so-
They always have a Strucka Borough, and the four members were removed with prejudice, meaning it could never be brought again.
Mm-hmm. Well.
We'll see.
Why don't we turn this into the insurance company, and have them take care of it, and then bill us the last fight, though?
Why, we'll take it second.
Correct, my fee agreements with Borough.
There was a motion by you.
It's up to the Borough.
I said it for reimbursement.
No, I, no, when you contracted it, that was for the litigation-
My law, my fee agreements with the Borough.
With the, with the insurance company.
With the Borough.
All right, so there, there is a October-November withdrawal in the treasurer's report for nine hundred and thirty dollars for Boujé Fisher, and then we're also paying, uh, nine hundred and thirty dollars, is that the same?
Ray, did you repeat that?
So, in the treasurer's report, and these are bills that are paid or to be paid, I, again, I know Jack mentioned it, but there's a Boujé Fisher invoice for nine hundred and thirty dollars, but then we also have a nine hundred and thirty dollars along with the five hundred and ten for Borough Business. I mean, it could, it could be another invoice of the exact same amount, I don't know. I can't speak, or I don't have a copy of that, for the October meeting, whether he does, I'm not sure.
The November fifth invoice is for services from October third to November second, including attendance at the October meeting and attendance at the special meeting, each at a rate of three hundred dollars.
So, that is the, I'm just asking if that's the same list item, is all I'm curious about. So that is the... I'm just asking if that's the same list item is all I'm curious about. Do you see what I mean? I don't believe it is. I don't know how. I don't have the other bill. I don't believe it is.
You had a treasurer's report where some of these bills are already paid to the treasurer's report?
As we went over.
That's what I'm saying. Some of these were already paid prior to voting on it, right?
No, they were voted on at the November 2nd.
We just... We had this discussion for like 20 minutes on the treasurer's report. We're now on general account.
I'm wondering that as well because... No, never mind. I have other questions to ask.
I don't believe we do.
I have some questions to ask about these invoices. Will some of them just say to client, who did you speak to? We've had this discussion before about saying who you actually talked to.
It would likely be Mr. Haines. Darrell.
Like, November 21st.
He's never had a conversation with me and Jack hasn't had one recently, so...
21st, November 21st, correspondence to client with copies of documents on church sale.
Well, we knew about that.
So you have those documents with the closing costs and everything then? We just said with copies of documents on church sale. December 1st, correspondence to client. Okay, I don't know who the client is. Okay, and then November 17th, correspondence... Which is funny because on November 17th, you say telephone call with Darrell, but then on that same day, you say correspondence to client.
Client is the borough. Client is not Darrell. Client is the borough.
That's why I'm asking.
Did you hear what you wrote? Struck a borough.
To make it clear, the client is the borough.
Well, November 23rd, telephone calls with client. Well, that's not the borough because you've never called me.
It's likely Darrell. You're right. It's likely you've never called me. It's likely Darrell Haines.
So we brought this up before about when you're having phone calls and having specifics sent to people that we need to know specifically who you are talking to.
If you want to vote against paying that portion of bills, you're voting to do that.
But we've already addressed this and you agreed that you would list who you specifically talked to.
So maybe the bill or did you put it down? That's the way it is.
Okay, I want to go back and address Keith here where he says everything was on the agenda for November 2nd. That is totally false. So you got Tom Schwartz on the December bills to be paid. Where's Tom Schwartz on there? Where's assistant solicitor on the bills to be paid for December?
We went over the assistant solicitor issue. Tom Schwartz, there was a motion made by Darrell back in September or October to pay Tom Schwartz two payments. One for one month and one for the other. I would encourage you to go back and read the minutes because they're in there.
Okay, DGK insurance, $390. I don't see that on the bill. That hasn't been paid probably.
Yes, and that was discussed at the last meeting. And you got a bill to be paid.
Because it wasn't on the agenda last regular one.
The last regular meeting.
October.
October's meeting.
And it was voted on with a bill for DGK for $390.
I'll tell you what's happening here with this treasurer's report. No, what's happening with the treasurer's report is you're not focusing on business. Current business during these meetings. I would encourage you again to go back and read the minutes where it has absolutely to pay DGK insurance. The four final payments totaling this $390.75. It's in your October bills to be paid.
And I'll tell you what is going on, Mr. Payne. Is that you guys didn't have regular meetings and you only had your four special things on your special meeting in November? And you didn't have a regular meeting. So now the bills that have to be paid, you guys are just paying.
That is incorrect.
Was Mr. Schwartz paid?
That is incorrect. I got a letter from Mr. Schwartz saying he has not been paid. I had called the bank. I had called the bank and they realized and they're paying Mr. Schwartz.
Can I see Mr. Schwartz's bill?
Back again with this agreement with the bank. They're supposed to be... See the minutes? They're supposed to be approved before they send out the four checks.
It's never been where you have to approve bills to be paid or we'd be paying bills months out. When motions are made to pay the bills, you pay the bills. You don't wait for the minutes to come out to pay the bills. Once motions are made to pay the bills, you do. What agreement?
Who's agreeing? The dollar brought here.
The bill requested.
I see your... Long eagle.
Right, so did you make it those motions?
I received a letter saying he was not paid for the final two payments.
So did the...
I don't have that letter on me, but a motion was made back in September or...
September. To pay him.
To pay him two installments.
So is that 425?
Unfortunately, yeah, 425.
There's two installments?
Correct.
There was an installment that I had.
You're wrong on that.
No, I had an installment in October's treasurer's report. If you go back to that one, you'll see it there. 425 for that month and then 425 for this month. Should get him hold at what he is owed, the 850.
You guys are just bringing the documents to the borough. We would all know what's going on.
Don't pay attention and we should know what's going on.
How many bills we've been making? Do you have a bill here? How many bills?
I make things clear, all right? I make things very clear.
I'll pay too much of the bills.
The motion was made in September, Jack, and paid the payments to Tom Schwartz.
He hasn't been paid. Why not?
We don't have your name.
And here it is.
Make a motion to want to pay the bills.
So where's the bill for... You didn't give back a church for $7,000. We should be having a bill for this.
No, the motion is made to pay that.
Where is the... Where is the bill for... You have Bill Pikes's bill. Pursuant to the agreement. Let's get that one on record. We pay somebody pursuant to the agreement. We don't have to have a bill, John. Is that legal to do? No bill.
If it's in the contract.
Darwin Haines, Keith Payne, yes. Where's the council?
We're off the vote on it. We don't have to have a bill presented to us.
You're trying to prove the contract that has the amount in it.
You get it, though?
Uh, Jack, yes or no?
Absolutely no.
No.
Shame.
This is Thompson, New Thompson Hoos.
Oh, it's already handed out. That's 23?
No, this is not what's coming.
Also, fire contract. Darrell, have you requested the copy of the contract with the assistant solicitor? Get a copy, please. But you were getting out the last one.
Yeah, last one.
But it had one in the next pair of...
When did you request that contract?
Would have been October.
I've requested paper all year long. I can receive it now.
So we're going to vote on this contract until it's filled out.
We're going to still have it out prior to approving it.
Test.
Blue. Oh, so well, you know the date, right?
Oh, the date, okay.
We just have a...
Please make a move in the table.
I'm not getting involved in your scam that you got going with the Thompson Hoos Company up there. I've already heard the whole story back the last three years. Where you were blaming Mr. Wallace for everything.
I didn't blame Mr. Wallace for anything.
No, it was on Kim.
It was him that required to get some payments.
Blame it on Kim now. I can't get my disciples to do that.
She's incapable of doing her job.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure you can look back when I was president for six years. I signed a contract. We hadn't paid on time. It was a very simple contract back then. We collected different taxes. And in February's meeting, we voted to send it out. It was a 5% administration fee that the borough kept and all the rest of the money went to Thompson Hoos Company. We had a very good relationship then.
Okay, I make a motion to throw Thompson Hoos' contract to the 2023 season.
What's second there?
All in favor?
Tom Haines, junior, yes.
Darwin Haines, yes.
Keith Payne, yes.
Chris Crone, yes.
Jack, yes.
Kristen, yes.
Just remember back in 2018. It was on the audit that we paid that fire taxes $22, $2,300, but we never did pay it.
We have to work that one out.
We'll have to ask Laura that did the audit.
This is dated October 30th, 2022, Strucka Borough Council. I am requesting a driveway permit at 318 Penn Hill Road. Sincerely, Darwin Haines.
What would that mean?
Yeah, it's a little map.
Put your motion up there.
I make a motion that's to struck a borough issue a driveway permit to Darwin Haines for the property at 318 Penn Hill Road. An address provided by the Wayne County Planning Department, who maintains the county's 911 addresses.
Will you hear a second?
I thought we had to get a... Something from the county first. Or it should come through council first for driveway permit. And on the map here, we've got field. What field is that?
This is a field closest to the Carpenter Room.
It's a little old field. So...
That's the other subdivision.
Get a map around. You said this is the field closest to Carpenter Room. This apparently is the driveway. So what is this? That's the field. What is this?
Woods.
I don't know. It's just black. It's like in the vicinity of the field, but it's not in the field. It looks like... I don't know.
So the field is on the lower part of the paper and the driveway.
So is it going to like woods or...
Yes, yes, beyond the field, yes.
We need a road in the woods.
With that motion.
Yeah.
Darwin Haines, junior, yes.
Darwin abstained.
Keith Payne, yes.
Chris Crone, yes.
I abstained due to the fact that I've got this within the minutes. I abstained and this before. Because the Penn Hill Road was vacated in 1944. Some more rural workers that you can't find in Portland.
Kristen, no.
One second. Has it Darrell?
Okay, I make a motion to purchase road sign brackets from Bonham Supply and Pay For. They're roughly $15 apiece.
How many?
Uh, no more than three.
What road is it?
I will check and make sure, but it will be more than three.
Wait. You know there's three, but you got to check to make sure. So what road are we talking about here? It's definitely...
I don't know where it's been here on Carpenter.
Can I ask why you're... I wonder how that anyway?
What note signed up?
Yeah, the brackets.
Because you have to have a bracket on top of the post.
You remember our COVID meeting or... Did you read the minutes for that?
I don't know.
And? And what does the minute say, Darrell?
But I haven't seen any brackets.
Well...
We didn't have a meeting. You don't know where I live.
You don't have to have a meeting to...
No, no, you're exactly right.
Okay, there's a motion to...
I've got the package right here.
I'll second that.
I stuck to my word.
Okay.
What would be the third room? You got Penn Hill Carpenter? How long?
It was only a double bracket. That's what started out the...
Yeah, we got them on.
And are those double brackets?
Yep.
Okay.
It should have stayed there in the minutes if we had...
No, we got my motion. Okay, Carly Bateson, lawsuit.
The lawsuit's been proceeding along. The court ruled in our favor on the second set of preliminary objections. Remove the four individual council members with prejudice. Case is down to three counts. The judge directed Carly Bateson to amend her complaint. So we're waiting for the amended complaint. In the meantime, the plaintiff filed a motion for injunction to try to stop the sale of the church that was set for a rule returnable back in late November. But the lawyer for the plaintiff asked for continuance and continued. So the judge continued it until Thursday of this week at 1:00.
Question, Ron.
And he's addressing that on...
The injunction, I believe.
Just the injunction?
Yep, that's what we're doing.
Yes. Question, I believe the judge ruled on her amended complaint, like wasn't it November like 9th or something? And he gave her how many days?
Twenty days.
Twenty days to amend it.
Right.
So that would have been the 29th of November.
Right.
November is the 7th, then it's business days, I believe.
It's not business days.
No, it's the straight days.
Only if the last day occurs on a weekend.
Or a holiday.
A holiday, you get an extra day. But they count weekends otherwise. So I don't know whether one's been filed or not timely. We'll have to check and that will come out likely Thursday.
But at this point in time, you're not aware of that.
I have not received any amended complaint.
At some point on a... It was to be filed by November 29th.
It was filed by 20 days. That's the judge's shooting order.
Okay, we have one here. We have a question for that.
November 7th, Darrell. Sounds like you're global and you got something here, Darrell.
In your face.
Yeah, it starts with a Y.
You'll have to see it.
Damn, there's a bullack.
So when it happened, this filed by November 27th.
What is that at?
How do you know it wasn't filed to the court?
I don't know.
It's... We didn't say that.
They have not been served with...
Well, I just liked the bloody look. I was like, oh, he didn't do...
It's edible. Look, it's... As of this time, we're not aware that...
We're not aware.
Nobody knows. Guess you'll find out through...
But that's on the preliminary injunction, not on this?
That's correct.
At this time, I would like to resign as vice president, Strucka Borough Council, council at the council. Back to the meeting.
Smart move, Darrell. Darrell will reappoint you, don't worry.
You already paid the money off.
Hi, Donald Haynes Jr., resigning as council member as a great amount.
Darren, you know it. We don't wanna go down.
Other, uh, letters? I, Keith Payne hereby resign as councilperson only, effective immediately.
Where are your official letters? Just we.
They don't, they don't have to have letters, but it changes the order, how it's done.
What do you mean by, um, first only?
As assistant secretary.
You're staying on as assistant secretary?
Yes.
Well, chief.
If that's the case, why don't you just be the second secretary?
So that you guys, you're, they resigned so they wouldn't have to take care of anything else that was on the agenda, is that the gist of all this?
Yeah.
Okay, that's that. Probably during the meeting, you can have a special meeting next week. Does that mean you want one council?
Do I have a four?
Make this like, here, I have a question. Once the meeting has, no, the meeting doesn't have. Once you.
Motion to adjourn the meeting, it has to be seconded.
Hey, you can still have a meeting, start with the court, this is wrong, illegal, this is wrong, illegal. This is what everyone wants. Look.
They did not.
They were all right.
We did not.
This meeting has not been adjourned, you guys can do whatever you want.
They knew it.
They, you guys can do whatever you want, Val, this is a legal meeting still.
Aren't they unreal?
Boujé, you're false. We've been trying to get our act together.
Yeah, you do, you do. This is still a legal meeting. Once you open a meeting with a form, you can continue, you can dump half of it.
You guys, you can continue.
Jack and Kristen, you can continue this meeting.
They're going down, they know. They know they're going down.
They were the four councils at the time, not these three.
So, I'm in a church.
But I actually audit your stuff. I want to work, but you will, it takes the audit last year. Is it in the landmark? No, 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 they've known bullshit, like.
Say in a minute, you would back, we back then, fifteen years.
Obviously, now you're over.
You want to see what you're taking pictures of.
Didn't stop you from attacking my mother.
Ron, exactly, it didn't.
Exactly.
You drove her off this council.
Are you willing to take down the clowns?
No, I'm not, I wanted to go against anybody.
Well, you went against Jack, you went against this community, you went against my mother. You went against this whole community.
This whole community, you guys, so.
You were ranked the former president of the council till she resigned.
Okay, I have a question.
Health issues.
You may have a minute, go ahead.
I know that.
This meeting is actually still open.
I don't think it is.
Yeah, it is.
They did not.
You did not.
They're doing the journey of the life.
Well, let's say here, while we're still possibly in an open meeting, why don't you find where we can?
They did not vote on the resignations. It has to be voted on.
Yep, they said as of now.
They said as of now, they did not vote. There was no adjournment for the meeting.
Right, the meeting is still on session.
The chair has a right to adjourn the meeting, the chair can open a meeting, the chair can adjourn.
They have to.
They did not adjourn it. They put it locked out.
The chairman adjourned, he has a right to adjourn.
No, he did not do without vote.
Surely we're a meeting adjourned before we leave here.
No, that just shows, that shows.
Oh, so it's your opinion again.
If it's not in the borough code, then it's, like, that's what we have to follow.
Like, you just.
Borough code doesn't give you every step of the way to follow it every day.
All right.
Oh, you're just telling me, where's your precedence, you're just saying this is your opinion. If you have nothing to go by, how can we even believe what you're saying?
I'm one of my common rules of order on.
Show it to me somewhere, anywhere, show it to me anywhere.
On property owners associations and other members of power.
I don't care what you're saying, prove it to me. I don't believe in what you're saying.
And it's okay, and listen, if you had.
You sat here in this room and told me I'd get in trouble for asking questions, why would I ever?
I want somebody that's gonna clean us up. We, our staff are goddamn sick and tired of being screwed by these assholes.
And that's your concern?
And you know it, and you allow it.
I will be your lawyer, simply you can work forward to get this girl out of the messes that they've been in.
Give her a little.
No, wait a minute. You're, you're saying you're willing to do that.
Right.
But you also are sitting there saying they're not responsible.
Yeah.
It's not responsible, Milosin.
Do you think that's they are?
Right, but why would you even agree to fight with that? Because who was that? Who was the council members? Those four and myself. That's it. I voted against it. All the.
I think they're the same as Milosin.
So instead of those four.
You know, a simple thing like for Jason, you know, for the violation of sunshine act. A simple thing, they wouldn't even tell Jason when the special meetings were. So, like, the twenty-second, like, these meetings that's in, in talk here. They didn't ever invite him to the meetings. So those meetings are in violation. So now you know this going in to argue with the judge.
Let me tell you this, from what little I know for this year, that's been experienced, one that sometimes maybe I'd rather forget, but. Why do people are in a real mess?
It's because of those four.
No, so.
Please, let me talk to them.
Maybe people are in a real mess. I think everybody has to realize that the boroughs in the real mess.
I know, for many years.
But so now the question is, what are we doing in your mess? Now, either we fight forward and clean up the mess, which is a whole way to make anything out of this. It's starting now, that's why I said, now, if you've got them out, you've got Darrell Haynes, Kristen Potter, and your sister. Technically, the two of you in control.
They're still stuck with this church.
Well, I want to know about that too. Why are we not getting?
How can we open a meeting now, there's only three of us?
There's only three sitting members.
Right, so two out of three.
It's only actually sitting members.
Well, I'm saying, look, you have a choice, you can either.
How do we petition the court to get the court to rule what we have to do?
We, well, I think the court's not gonna tell you what to do.
Well, we've got people, they had letters here of people who were of interest.
But.
I know, but you know what, they did your, they did against your due diligence, because they didn't want people to get on council to take over.
Well, we need to replace those people.
Yes, how are we doing it? How are we doing it?
So I have a question.
We're all council members, we're all council.
Exactly.
Darrell Haynes.
I, I can't talk all over all, even keep, I teach middle school, so I'm running all there. Okay. Who has the authority to call a special meeting?
Well, it's in the code.
Majority of the council?
President.
The president or?
Or a certain number of borough council members.
Four, it has to be four members, I think it says.
Does it say?
Or is it the majority?
Or is it majority? See, that's what I get about.
I thought it was at least three, hasn't it?
I thought it was like.
But he said, Darrell Haynes said, let's have a special meeting.
Right, but who knows what that's going to be, because he purposely tries to do it when people can't come.
I think honestly, before you have a special meeting, one of us ought to sit down together and get our act together as to what you're gonna do going forward.
We have people that want to meet on council.
Then get them, let's get them on.
They've sent letters and they don't have knowledge. Let's get, can we explain something?
I understand, but let me tell you something, because I'm about to leave here too. No, no, stop, stop, just stop.
I'm trying to.
Those people that submitted letters, those letters should be entertained. And the council members that are left should entertain those people's letters and make a determination.
I'm not talking about the letters, I want, I want, I know you're frustrated, we are all frustrated.
I'm very frustrated.
But listen, I know you're frustrated.
Four years, you've been lying.
Everybody quiet, please. What I want to explain to you is, yes, they were the majority, but you have no idea what they've done. They got that, they made sure when they made this agenda up, that their resignations and appointments were gonna come before any of this stuff that they did not want to address. This is how those four amigos work. That's why there's so much animosity.
That's what Darrell Haynes.
All of Jack's stuff.
I recognize the animosity and I understand where it's coming from, and I, I understand that it certainly has a strong basis for coming out. I understand that completely. But the point is, the more you people fight with one another, the more it's gonna cost, the worse it's gonna get, and you're not gonna get anywhere.
Not a way, it's for standing up for what's right.
Okay, Jack, listen, get a hold of things now and put it on the right path. You were president, you were gonna do.
Leave that friend.
President, Kristen decided.
No way.
Darrell's four lawsuits, he was running, putting in.
All right.
I mean, he just got bankrupt on this, you're lucky, Steve.
Now, listen, I will invite you, you decide whether you want you or only Kristen to come down, or only one of you can come down, there's three people, I can only meet with one, I can't meet with more than one. Otherwise, it's violation of sunshine. But I will meet with one of you ahead of time and go over what we think is the roadmap to getting the borough council out of this mess. If you want to do that, if you want to get somebody else, you can get somebody else, I'll tell you.
Well.
Well, you can say you would like to see, because I want to show you what I'm talking about, these dead-end dirt roads, town hall. I think you should visually see this first.
That was yours, that, that's okay.
I think you should visually see this.
I will visually see it, I will come up and see it.
One day next week, let's get together and you come up.
You call me, you call me tomorrow or Wednesday, I'll set a date, and I'll, and we'll do it. And you want me to come up here and then I'll go over that other stuff with you, with one person.
I would love.
And then you guys can make your own decision as to what you want to do going forward.
And this is all legal for me being a councilor and to meet with you.
One person, yes, one person can.
A majority, a majority can meet with.
One can.
And since there's only three of us now, two.
Honestly, people deserve a lot more than you've got over the years.
Okay, that's why he's saying one of them.
But some of it, I'm gonna be honest, is self-inflicted. I'm not gonna get into why it was self-inflicted or mistakes were made, and we know lots of mistakes were made.
I don't know.
On your end.
No, 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 no.
On your end.
I don't know, it's wrong, Ron, you don't know the truth.
I'm saying, there's lots of things out there, you can either fester this, bring this thing up about special, or correct this.
You brought this up, I made something of self-infliction, what was that?
I said you people self-inflict.
Okay, what would that be?
Well, right, I'll be very honest, Kristen Potter, you have made a mockery of being on the council by insulting almost everybody on the council. Honestly, it's, it's her.
But you were insulting the president.
Little man, little man. No, I took that as somebody did throw you off council.
Okay, well.
You got a terrible job in that regard.
Okay, well, then, you know, when my mother submits all the insults and threats.
Your mother did the best she could to try.
Yes, my poor insults and the threats that you subjected to her.
You have emails of those threats.
I told you.
What she has in writing.
That's a fact.
So you want to talk about who makes a mockery of their position, you're supposed to be a lawyer for the borough.
The only threat made by inviting this council on you.
I've read those emails.
And you're a council member for the borough, that's why.
I've read those emails.
You're solicitor, you've been to the president of the council.
You don't have to tell those four, you said, to act like council.
Tom, you have good ideas, man.
I will, I will, I haven't put my time in here to defend this borough.
Titles of the General Assembly shall provide a reasonable opportunity for people to speak prior to this.
They've got something up their title yet.
I'm very educated.
Hey, Ron. Oh, yeah. Ron, one last thing, I, I had a letter to Keith that he never read at this meeting.
I did too.
About last year's audit, the twenty-twenty-one audit.
All right, look, the audit's gotta be taken care of, you don't even have a budget, for crying out loud.
They can't, they're in here.
So they never gave us the documents to do an audit, right? We just went off of a bank statement, that's all we were given. We were given boxes of just nonsense.
You're one of the auditors?
Correct. Got it, I'm checked out, so.
All right.
Uh, we never had, had any minutes, we never had no signs, we were supposed to have a bound book of minutes, we had meeting minutes that were missing. Now, I can go through and just plug numbers into an audit, thing on, on P A's website.
Well.
But if I can't see where money was spent, uh, if see where they voted to spend money, that's not an audit.
The auditors have to make a report, even if the report is, we don't have enough information, we don't have this, we don't have that, you need to make a report, okay?
It was done back in April.
They already have.
You need to make a report, that's all.
They already have.
This is what I announced, that I had sent to Keith that I wanted the agenda to try to clarify this out. So who do, who do I send a report to, just the C D C?
Well, you ought to send it to the borough council too, because people have.
He's got it there, Bill. That was my, I don't have, I didn't.
I'd like to see it, send it to me, I'd like to see it.
Oh, you give it to Darrell already?
I think the publicist.
Oh, so Keith already had that, so another thing that they just bailed on us.
I've never seen it, get it to me, you call me, we'll talk to you and we'll have a good discussion, I'm gonna make a decision.
Yep.
We're talking about moving forward instead of trying to carry on.
I don't.
The process is, I can see at the beginning, nobody.
I don't know. If Keith three signed, why didn't he walk up and say?
I tried to work him, take back. So he could be a secretary.
He's a secretary.
I know, but why don't we, I'm ready to start.
Call me, I'll see how that one, you want to do.
Ron.
Ron?
Jason, I think, had a question.
Yeah, what do you have, Jason, this year?
So where you go? In the next meeting, how do we go about bumping the borough back from seven members to back to five?
Oh, even three, there's a petition, you can go for it first.
Okay.
We file a petition.
I know, well, let's look at things reality.
No, don't do it.
They say.
Don't do it, maybe five.
When they're voted out.
Maybe five, but go do three.
So, present that to you, like, I'm asking for legal, myself, the mayor, maybe Kristen, would go on here, so what do we, how do we conduct the next meeting? Because.
It's a re-organization meeting.
We still have six months, because they got us resigned, like, you and Carly, but we never voted, so. Threatenation, I got still not there, we don't have a letter. That's what I'm saying.
No, they.
They're heralds, they know what color they're.
Yeah, but they've already come up. That's all they want.
Because they, like, they might. Because, because, you know, what you get done, that's the big part, which.
It's already, it's already gone, you know, financial compensation available, which is why these injunctions, you know, and then they, oh, well, the lawyer.
I don't care, he's the number one. No way.
That's why she did.
You should have spoken, said that.
Give me a copy of that, you're still.
The court knows.
Yeah.
Call me when it's together. All right, true.
Well, that was interesting.
Hey, Jack.
Is that your water?